... with the Denver County Schools Replacement Update. And welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come address council again today.
Before you get started, you are the very first person to address this like this. It's a very historic one.
This is a wonderful.
But just now the pressure is on and you will be setting the standard for everybody else. But otherwise, no problem.
We're our best. Thanks. So we came back in the video in June to give you some information related to future action. And we wanted to come back, we heard, to get some feedback. And it would be helpful to have more information provided to help you make the best available decision for an action that I'll mount back in this September conference. I'm going to turn this over to Melissa Ingram, the fourth officer, Jack Freeman, Chief Operations Officer for Virginia Beach City Schools. Melissa Ingram is here with me. She is our Executive Director for Facilities. Our goal for today is to have, share information and to be able to answer questions that you have and have a dialogue with you if needed, to be able to share that information with you to be able to set up an action agenda item in September. Our school board just this past week voted to approve the items that we're going to present to you. So it's on action for you. I'm going to share bottom line of funds. This is not the entire comprehensive package that we will be asking for action. It is an interim agreement that we're asking. The interim agreement is going to have a portion of the money which Melissa is going to brief you on. And every bit of that dollar value will have value if we do not continue to go forward with the PPA. We at this point in time cannot tell you whether we're going to recommend that we, when all is said and done, that we continue to move forward with the PPA. What our job has been is to, in each wicket that we come up, to say, is there a reasonable level of confidence that we should continue with this process? If it has benefits to the community and to our taxpayers to be able to continue this process. At that point, if we continue to answer that question is yes. But the ultimate question won't be resolved until we know what the comprehensive package comes out. And that's going to be, we'll start to see the draft of that agreement in the springtime and next summer will be when we will be making work. So big picture items, we will get every bit of value out of this money, whether we continue with a comprehensive agreement with a PPA or not. You will have an opportunity to vote on that at a later time if we go forward with an interim agreement. So there are mechanisms in place to ensure that you are able to continue to provide your feedback into the system as to whether it is in your best interest to proceed with that or not. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Ingram to be able to give you the brief and then we will take the questions that you have.
And so, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I just wanted to say thank you for letting us know this is the first brief as a former planner. Under Boss Guy, it's a big honor to be here when this building one is opening our conference here. So really appreciate it. Thank you. So again, we're here today to provide an additional brief to City Council on the proposed PPA interim agreement. It's for three replacement schools approved in the CIP. We've discussed this process several times with our school board and on July 5th with you all in City Council. The brief is going to be focused on, as Mr. Freeman mentioned, the interim agreement phase of the PPA, which is a year-long phase. And the comprehensive agreement is to come after that phase is over and we'll seek additional approvals at that time for that phase. The school board again voted to approve the interim agreement at their last meeting on Tuesday, August 9th. So as you can see in front of you, currently we have three school replacement projects proposed in the capital improvement program. This was recently approved by the school board and City Council for this budget cycle. They are as follows: Princess Anne High School Replacement, CIP 1-015, with a budget of $162.65 million; Williams Elementary School Bayside Sixth Grade Replacement, CIP 1-028, with a budget of $68.3875 million; and Bayside High School Replacement, CIP 1-029, with a budget of $197.7 million. These three CIP projects total over $428 million. The proposed interim agreement, as you can see here, is proposed at a not-to exceed price of $15.4 million for roughly 12 months of design development for these three replacement projects, which includes public input. $15.4 million is 55% of the total design budget for all three schools and is 3.6% of the total budget for all three schools. It's also important to note that included in the interim agreement, which is posted publicly online for over 30 days as needed in the guidelines, but there's a credit from the offer in there for up to $500,000 for any cost reimbursements needed for BBCPS should the division decide to hire consultants or services to aid with working towards a comprehensive agreement. So BBCPS's PPA RFP process went through a number of required steps from June 2021 to April 2022 with two offers. After school board workshop, the BBCPS Review Committee shortlisted SB Ballard Construction Company for the interim agreement for this year-long design process in this phase. In June, additional information was provided to the school board and a public hearing was held on the $15.4 million interim agreement. On July 5th, City Council was briefed on the entire PPA process. School board voted to approve the interim agreement at their last meeting on Tuesday, August 9th. As a reminder, the first step of the PPA process, the interim agreement for a year of design services, is our focus for approvals. This year, we'll be back to you in September. So deliverables for the interim agreement would be educational specifications, conceptual plans with building and site options, schematic designs, 30% design and engineering documents, and a GMP or a guaranteed maximum price. If the interim agreement is successful in the coming year, the school board would retain all input and documents created during this time period, whether or not approvals for a comprehensive agreement is entered into after that year. With the comprehensive agreement, we would be looking at roughly six years of construction, which is much quicker than what is planned in the CIP for the three replacement schools. The offer has continued to stay engaged with the process at their own risk. If full approval of the interim agreement is gained in September, activities for design will begin right away, with public design shreds for site and building options being some of the first steps, advancing to schematic designs, and then 30% documents. So some of the benefits of the PPA process, as we mentioned, is delivery of these three replacement schools in a much sooner than anticipated in the CIP. Princess Anne High School will be roughly a year earlier, three years earlier for Williams Bayside Sixth, and two years earlier for Bayside High School. The earlier opening of schools not only would benefit over 4,500 students in their learning environments, but also means an earlier bid date for construction services, which will result in cost savings tied to this earlier bid date and completion of schools, avoiding several years of inflation costs for each of the three projects. The contractor and architectural engineering design team also helped to produce these cost savings, with the contractor being involved and having input from the beginning of the design process, creating efficiencies with both design and construction processes. With the cost per square foot of construction inflating roughly 4.8% to 5.6% a year historically, coupled with the current volatility of the market, the benefit of an earlier guaranteed maximum price will result in these cost avoidances for all three replacement projects, as well as having shared risk on the contractor's part as well. Another benefit of the pre-PA process would be the establishment of a prototype high school plan for the next several high school replacements, which are all aging. Several learning communities and academy areas would have to be adapted to the next replacement school's high school specialties. But by retaining ownership of these documents, the prototype plan will speed up the design process for those next schools to utilize this prototype as a starting point of design. It's also important to discuss financial commitments. As with any CIP projects, debt appropriated for the CIP will be used for funding for the replacement schools. This process commits to funding beyond the six-year capital window with funding not yet appropriated. A benefit to this process is that another source of financing is made available to leverage if we were to enter the comprehensive agreement, which is the financing of the private sector is able to secure for the public sector. In addition to use of public facility revenue bonds and use of reversion funds to act as funding sources for these replacement projects, private financing can also be made available. Entering into an interim agreement for design services, schools and city staff will discuss financing towards this comprehensive agreement in more detail during the upcoming budget process, coming up with a plan for budgeting the PPA over the next several years if we were to enter a comprehensive agreement. With many benefits to be gained in the replacement process of schools approved in the CIP, the PPA's interim agreement of $15.4 million could be entered into this year with all funds needed already appropriated for these three projects. So just looking at the timeline in front of you, it shows a recap in relation to the PPA total process. In June 2021, we received an unsolicited proposal for these three replacement school projects. In August 2021, the school board authorized a superintendent to accept the unsolicited proposal. Per the PPA guidelines, the public solicitation for competing bids was advertised in October 2021, PPA request for conceptual phase proposals, number 5083. In December 2021, we received two offers, one from SB Ballard Construction Company and one from Heartland Jordan JD, which were both accepted per the RFP criteria. Per the PPA guidelines, the school division then posted the PPA request for detailed phase proposals, number 5083, in February 2022, with both offers again submitting detailed phase proposals in March 2022. In April, the PPA Review Committee received presentations from both offers and shortlisted SB Ballard Construction Company in order to begin negotiating the interim agreement we are considering this year. The proposed interim agreement is currently posted publicly online along with other components of the PPA process describing this timeline. The proposed interim agreement has been posted online for 30 days, actually more than 30 days as required per policy, prior to any action being taken. So where we are now, so as we mentioned again, we briefed the school board again last week, August 9th, and they then received action approval from the school board to enter into the PPA interim agreement for one year of design development. We are here today for a brief with you all, City Council, with the opportunity for action for full approval of this interim agreement to come on September 6th. If approvals are granted for the interim agreement by both the school board and City Council, BBCPS project management team will work with SB Ballard Construction Company to plan, schedule, and host design shreds and other stakeholder meetings. Educational specifications, conceptual plans, building and site options, schematics designs, and then 30% design and engineering documents will be delivered to BBCPS from our PPA partner by late spring 2023. Through this process, staff will also negotiate a final comprehensive agreement for final guaranteed maximum price. This would conclude the interim agreement. The team would then review deliverables and seek approvals from both school board and City Council to move forward with a comprehensive agreement in late spring 2023. If those approvals for a comprehensive agreement are to be attained, seen in the gray on your timeline here, notice to proceed for construction services would be granted and begin again looking at roughly six years of construction. So in closing, there are substantial benefits to continuing the pre-PA process for the school division and the community of Virginia Beach. The proposed interim agreement for $15.4 million, 55% of the budgeted design work, and 3.6% of the total budget will be in front of you, September 6th, for action. BBCPS will have the ability to utilize the input and documents created during this year-long process and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at this point? Okay, John, and then Rosemary.
I just have a speech I want to do because of my situation. That's what I wanted to do.
Oh, go ahead, John.
This is for my colleagues, the attending public, and the viewing public. Based on an opinion from the Commonwealth Attorney on the Commonwealth Conflict of Interest statute, as my wife is a school teacher, I am excluded from participating in discussions on school matters that involve a singular issue exclusively involving the school in this forum. Therefore, at this time, in the context of the presentation cited, presented by school board staff, I will not address an otherwise comment on the proposal being made in this forum. I have consistently expressed my belief that the City Council needs to weigh the competing demands upon finite resources in a holistic manner. And the city's debt capacity is a constrained resource. These considerations were addressed in the City Manager's memorandum with City Council dated August 12, 2022, subject to Virginia Beach City's Public Schools PPA request, possible impact on the city's overall debt profile. I support the manager's request that this council be fully informed on the downstream consequences to the city of the school board's request, including impact upon borrowing capacity, bond rating, opportunity cost, and surge capacity. I formally concur with the closing paragraph of the City Manager's memorandum that states, "My suggestion to the City Council regarding this matter is that you consider taking a strategic pause in approving the BBCPS PPA process. In doing so, council is not saying no to the request, rather the pause will allow time for the city to continue working with our consultants to determine our true debt profile and capacity, as well as constraining effects it may have on council's priority. Not only will this pause provide time for the city, but it will also provide time for BBCPS to develop a sustainable funding plan for your consideration." In fact, unquote. For my colleagues, my top unfunded priority for the CIP is the construction of a new law enforcement training center. Without a new training facility, we cannot effectively grow the size of our force. I will address my comments on social media that I cannot share here in this forum for legal reasons previously stated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, John. Rosemary.
Thank you for being here. First of all, let me just say I certainly respect the school board and their deliberations. And I also respect Mr. Ballard. I mean, anybody can get this amount of work done in a short amount of time. He certainly has the capability. And I know in the past where he has built schools, he's built them either on time or he has. He is a phenomenal partner. And I also agree that if you move everything up, there could be some substantial costing. Of course, we don't know what that is. But my question to you is, by moving everything up and compressing it, have y'all figured out, because you have to pay the debt service on this, and you have to, that's not the first bill you have to write. I remember I heard the city say that so many times, the first check has to go to the debt service. Are, with this $428 million project potentially, have you figured out what the debt service is and can you handle it with them the formula?
So if we were to get through the interim agreement, that is what would happen over the course of the next year and the development of the comprehensive agreement. And our staffs would work with your staff to look at all of the challenges that were associated with it. The cost is one of them, but the other one is debt capacity and how will we do this? And that would be done over the course of this work, over the next year, if the interim agreement was approved. And remember when I said earlier that we don't know that our recommendation would be to proceed with the PPA? We would need to see what the comprehensive agreement said before we would come up with a recommendation. But in order to be able to have those conversations, we need to get to the interim agreement so that we can begin the relatively small amount of design that has to happen upfront, to be able to go through that year-long level of work, to be able to understand all the impacts, including what would the impact be on debt capacity for us to develop our recommendation, whether it would be recommended or not be recommended, whether we would proceed with this. Anything to add to that?
Anyway, it seems to me you should have some, you should be comfortable with this unless you think you can afford it.
So with the interim agreement, what the interim agreement allows is the design to a certain level. It's not 100% design on the schools. It's a design for all of those, all of the buildings that we're talking about. So, and this is where I mentioned upfront, that it's not wasted. So there's been comments made that, hey, are we potentially spending $15 million and have on a stack of paper? The answer is no. It is common practice for organizations to get designs to a certain level. And even if you can't use them right now, you put those designs on a shelf. And then when the time comes, you pull it off the shelf and use it. So for example, if we went through with the interim agreement and we developed a design for these three schools and we came back with a recommendation of no, based on this factor or number factor, it doesn't make sense to proceed with the PPA. We would now have those basic designs for those schools. When the time came in a normal design build process, design bid build process for the CIP, we would then take those designs off the shelf and say, we need to take these from the current state of design and develop them to 100%. And then they would be used as part of those. So we will own these designs, we will be able to use these designs in the future. The money will not be wasted. So to answer your questions, those, all that information will be developed if we approve the interim agreement over the course of the next year in full collaboration with your staffs and to develop a recommendation that will be given at that time. And we are not here telling you whether that recommendation will be yes or no. We just know that it looks promising. So the comment about, we think that there could be cost avoidance with this? We, and you said, we don't know what the number is, and that's true. But the projections are on the order of tens of millions of dollars of offset cost for our taxpayers. And as somebody who values being a good steward of taxpayers' money, I've said that in a personal standpoint, but I'll say the value for Virginia Beach City Public Schools is to be good stewards of taxpayers' money, knowing that is going to be of high value. Because we should be able to do a really good comparison with a comprehensive agreement of, hey, this is how much it's going to cost to do these three schools under this PPA, and this is the projection of the cost to include inflation if we were to do it under a design bid build. And then we will all have the right information for, all right, does this make sense from a debt capacity standpoint, from a offsetting cost for our taxpayers? All those factors being considered? And the city staff will be in full collaboration with that analysis.
Barbara.
I apologize, I can't see the speakers from here. However. Okay, I understand that and I understand we, everything was really terrific that we were going to be able to move these schools forward, particularly Bayview, Williamson, Bayside. And I remember Mr. Jones being extremely delighted that they were going to be funded and so forth. But now we get this from the city manager that says that if we go forward with this, quote, "They will need to seek permission from City Council to enter the agreement as well as to accelerate or increase funding in an estimated amount of $100-plus million to these projects." Well, where did that $100-plus million come from? Is that in this $400 and some, or is that $100-plus million in addition to that $400 and some million?
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Ingram. So the $100 million, so basically, as I mentioned during the presentation, we have a lot of the appropriations sitting outside of the six-year window. So the bulk of that money is really on Bayside High School. So as you're aware, Princess Anne High School is one of the schools up right now. Princess Anne High School was first seen in the CIP in 2008, 2009. You know, its current budget right now in '22, '23 is $162.65 million. Back in '08, '09, when it was first approved and approved in the CIP, it was at $105 million. So over those last 14 years, as it got moved back in the CIP, as most of you are aware, with some of our replacement projects, that often happens due to funding and appropriations, you can see how much larger the actual budget for that school replacement project has gone, as well as the 14 years it took for us to get to hoping it's, we might go to bid major. So that, the $100 million that is quoted is the portion of Bayside High School sitting outside that six-year window.
For some reason, the number three and a half million sticks in my mind as what the original Princess Anne High School cost back in the 50s.
Yes, it is startling when I do look back and in reparations for these, and I look at the difference, and again, that's one of the reasons that we are hopeful with this interim agreement to see what that guaranteed maximum price might bring to us and see what cost avoidances we might have in the future.
Well, I think that's what's troubling me, is that these costs keep escalating so much. And we know that we've committed to this bond referendum amount, which is quite substantial. And we don't want to overcommit, or we're really going to be in major difficulty. So this additional $100 million just coming down there really troubles me and because we don't know. But it's also kind of in my experience that when we get into these things, that we say, well, we're just looking at this, we're not committed to doing this. After we've looked at that, if we don't go forward, we're the bad guys for not going forward. So we get ourselves in a box sometimes by doing this, even though we understand that, hey, we're not committing to the full thing. But you know, if we're really looking at construction adding that much, I think that's what we need to go into this thinking, not just thinking that original number. And that's what I think the city manager was asking, that we pause so that we look at, with that additional amount, what's that going to do to our bond rating and all those things that we have to worry about? So I kind of think that we need to know a little bit more than we know right now.
So could I follow this on two points with that? So the bond referendum, I understand, is for flooding. Any CIP replacement project we've done with schools, as you all well know, will increase capacity for stormwater. So these would help the community in that respect for our flooding purposes. And two, we have 86 schools, roughly 100 school facilities, and they age every year. So if we don't go through these replacement cycles that are put out in the CIP, we have to go through individual roof replacements and other type HVAC replacements that are also costly. You know, and again, our job at Virginia Beach City Public Schools and Facilities Services is to create an appropriate, safe learning environment for our students. And through the CIP process, that's our intent with bringing forward this interim agreement to see if this would be beneficial to the community in this package.
Well, if all that's a fact, then that will come out in our future, in our looking at this. And that's where I think it's better for us to know than to just think this.
Yes, ma'am. And if I can just, and that's as part of the process, the information that you seek, that is built into the process. And it's built into the process once you get past the interim agreement to fully develop all of those items, to be able to fully understand what's the impact, what's the benefit, what are the consequences, and have the staffs involved in collaborating so that you have the best available information at the time. And as I said, we don't know that that recommendation is going to be yes. We just know that with each wicket that we've gone through, it looked promising enough to be able to recommend this stuff to the next step of the wicket, which is the interim agreement.
Aaron, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then Sabrina.
Just to remind, you know, council, the heart of, the foundation of this discussion, so we're talking about education and educating our students and making sure they have a great environment, learning environment, not only for our students, but also for our teachers. I know we have a great public school system here, which myself and many of people around this table are proud of. Now, I think it's something to be said that a lot of the schools that we all attended, high school and graduated from, they have not changed. And many of us are been around quite some time. And so I think that's something to be said going along, going further in this road that's ever-changing and always on the cusp of new technological advances that we ensure that our schools and equipment are up to date. Again, I think the conversation, right, is one that needs to be had, certainly around funding such endeavors, but is one that will pay off tremendously. Because as we sit around this table, hopefully in the future, the other students that go to school within Virginia Beach that was brought up in the public education system, that can sit around this table and make the same decisions that would benefit their future. And so I understand that this is a, you know, profound discussion what we're having on funding, but let's not forget, the heart of this matter is that we're trying to make sure we modernize our school system, which many of us have benefited from.
Thank you, Sabrina.
I'd also like to say thank you for the presentation. I, oftentimes, we know that we have myriad of challenges and concerns, competing interests, competing costs, and oftentimes, we've And oftentimes, we do want solutions or options to mitigate some of those challenges that we have. And I appreciate you bringing this forward as an option. What I'm hearing you say is an option. And I appreciate my colleagues and their concerns about stewardship and impacting, some of, making impact on maybe in a negative manner and some of the, looking at the overall picture, which you try to consider. But again, what I hear you saying is that's something that is factored as you move forward to the interim agreement. So you may not have all the answers as to the cost, but you want to move forward. And you want to move forward in the interim agreement so we can consider all of these competing factors and challenges and interests. Makes sense to me. What I would like to focus on are the benefits that you brought up. Been in several of these sessions, and I have heard about the timeline of replacing some of our schools from, you know, hundreds of years, which is unfathomable. Many people come to Virginia Beach because of the high-quality educational system we have. And that includes infrastructure. And we know we have a problem with replacing infrastructure in a timely manner. And so bringing this option forward with the benefit of replacing some schools sooner, cost savings and so forth, I think is something we certainly should consider. We certainly should look at it as a viable option. Oftentimes, I hear about projects and I hear about the increasing expenditures and costs to get them done. I think it also makes sense when we're talking about replacing infrastructure for our schools, that even though there may be some competing costs or increased costs, I think that's something that we can consider, especially for our schools, our children, because we do it many, many times for other projects that may not be as serious or may not be such a priority for our city and for our residents. So something that I hope my colleagues will consider as a viable option. And thank you for bringing this matter forward.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thanks, Basha. We look forward to continued discussions.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right, moving on. As a request, the council members branch and welcome our judicial center security parking upgrades. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Vice Mayor and City Council. I'm Sean Rockwell. I am the interim facilities engineer for Public Works and here to talk today about the judicial center parking security upgrades. That's my request. Great note on the agenda as they will talk about a project overview given with design status, which is currently underway. The architect had prepared some renderings of the proposed design solution. Those are included in the brief, and we'll have a few samples of those. We'll also talk about the estimated project timeline and some estimated budget requirements in the brief for the work next day. What we're here to do, the purpose, is to mitigate security vulnerabilities in the judge's parking area. Again, the design is underway, and the basis of that design, the threat assessment was completed by the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office in July of 2017. Basically, those enhancements call out the installation of cameras at the parking areas where the judges park, also the exterior doors of the facility that lead to those parking areas, and then enhancements of the perimeter around the parking areas, either by raising the brick walls, which we found to be technically infeasible, or by putting in a tall fence, which is what the design is currently proposing to do. And that is to adequately conceal the judges from view, the public when they're exiting the building and going to those chambers. Funds were provided for the design, FY 2022 budget cycle, $150,000, as known for free. And that plan was started in November. Discussions about the design preparation started in July of last year. And the design is underway by mostly architects, with the completion in approximately two weeks, the 30th of August. And just quickly, we're looking at the judicial center just for familiarity of the site, security upgrades per zone. There are three zones effectively that we're looking at. The first two is Zone A and B. Zone A is an eight-spaced, eight-space parking lot. Zone B is a four-space parking lot. And each one of them are very similar in scope. There is existing brick masonry, seat walls that are to remain. There's eight-foot-tall, non-climbable metal fences that will surround the parking areas and basically completely enclose the parking lot. Steel pickets will be installed. These match the architectural theme of the municipal center and are intended to go into the, and are approved by, rather, the historical board, to go into the parking lot surrounding Secure Parking and Building Two, which is currently under renovation. So although the fence is not currently in the municipal center, there's precedence for it being in the municipal center because of the approved design. Between each of the pickets, there'll be durable steel panels that will prevent visibility, and it will also hold up to cutting or penetration of someone trying to, say, cut a piece of cloth with a knife and then be able to see into the parking area. So that's been added in terms of mitigating a vulnerability. We'll also remove some existing drop-arm gates, replace them with sliding gates. They will match the fence. They will also have the steel plates. So there'll be the steel pickets with the plates, and those sliding gates, power gates will also be tied into our lineal system. So there'll be card access into the parking areas. We'll have adequate camera coverage of the parking areas and the exterior doors. One difference between the two scopes is that in Zone B, we'll put in a sidewalk. This is when detainees leave the building through an exit door and then traverse to another portion of the building. It'll keep them away from the judges' vehicles, and it also will eliminate trip hazards and other issues that might be there for concern of the detainees and the police as well, or chairs officers. The other area is Zone C. It is currently a 20-space parking lot. Just like A and B, there's existing seat walls that will remain. We'll install the eight-foot, non-climbable fence, steel, same pickets, same panels with powered gates, and we'll have access and appropriate camera coverage. Unlike Zones A and C, this parking lot is intended to be expanded. Again, currently 20 spaces, will expand six. So this is the south parking lot, so that's the southerly direction effectively. So it'll expand slightly this way, three spaces on this side, three spaces on the bottom, for a total of six additional spaces. And the site will, of course, then be closed with the same sliding gates and fences. Any questions at this point? Yes?
I have two. Since we are, I am surprised you don't have a gate that opens. A car goes in, the gate closes, and the other gate's open because we're doing a lot to do security. But once that gate comes open, if there's not another gate in front that's closed, you really have great exposure and you have a major degradation of the security we're paying a lot of money for. So I'm just curious, that the major vulnerability, the time it takes to open and time to close allows access. So it looks like we spent a lot of money, and might be rightfully so, but the last mile, we didn't really account for and provide really the integrity that a double entry, which you see in really secure facilities. And it seems like we've created, and so what is the mitigation for the timeframe and the number of minutes or seconds that between the thing slides open and also that people can come out? That's got to be some lapse of time. And then closes, what's your mitigation for the lot and preventing someone from entering during the opening-closing of the gate?
The mitigation is the cameras, which is why we have the camera coverage. And also the ability, and I can't speak for the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, but they can provide roaming patrols or a sheriff at the request of the judge. But specific to that, no, we didn't know. That's, it's the camera coverage and it's the sliding gate.
So in the threat assessment, I'm just trying to make sure if we're really providing, I understand why the people need security. I'm trying to understand that we're really providing security versus the appearance. So the time someone sees something on a camera, assuming that multiple judges could be leaving at the same time, some could be in their car going out, others could be chatting, I know what we do, chat at your cars. So in the interim, there's a time lapse response between the time that happens and less part of the security plan is that they're also being escorted. I'm just trying to make sure of the security assessment that the security we say we're providing is actually being provided. And does the study, I have looked at it, it didn't appear that it addressed that vulnerability or the timeframe of that vulnerability, and now that we've responded to. That's just an observation. I just spend a lot of time looking at security for things much more vulnerable to things than this. And to me, it just seems like, I know it's an added cost, but maybe it isn't worth it. But I just want to make sure that that exposure is known and it has a time. And people that really are not just random people, but people who have a plan are going to exploit every vulnerability, and that is.
Counsel, if I can offer a comment on that. This plan has been vetted with the judges themselves. They understand the limitations of what we're doing. We are not trying to provide an impenetrable fortress around the parking. This is, this is really designed to give a measure of security, to give a measure of privacy so that people cannot see in when the judges are transferring to in front of the parking lot, when they're entering their cars, which cars are there, it's that type of thing. The reason for the steel plates is to make sure that nobody can tamper with them. But, but there really is some limitations to this, which is the purpose of the cameras and which is why the sheriff's department is there at all times. We'd rather not comment on all of their comings and goings and how the internal operations of how the sheriffs work the courthouse. But there is other, there are other measures of security to be provided here. And the dual gate, I understand where you're going with that, but that is really more geared towards a more enhanced security presence than what we're, than what we're working with here.
Reason why I ask, because when I looked at this assessment that was done, you could make a similar argument for the Commonwealth attorney or the sheriff himself, or a school board member, or anyone today who serves in any kind of high-profile thing has people who are interested in doing harm. We've been fortunate, and sometimes insiders go over all that. So once you're saying that that level of threat is different from everybody else, because obviously we're not, you can look at our city council parking lot out here, it's a free zone. And that's fine with me, that's great. But once you say that some threat is different, because, and that's what that report says, I'm just saying that maybe we should be thinking downstream. But if we really want to do what we say we do, and the threat is really what you said there, we just fall a little bit short of, and just to make them feel a little bit better in privacy, $800,000 is a lot of money to spend for privacy. That's all I'm saying. We ought to really be providing meaningful security, but that's my last comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Harper.
I believe I saw that this item is on the historical review board's agenda for this week. Now, when you start making everything satisfy all the historical requirements, the cost generally goes up. Have you all looked at that? And where do you believe you are there? And are there some particular things that we ought to be looking out for?
We've submitted, as of July 18th, provided the renderings to the historical board. Again, ma'am, as you said, tomorrow, if they're going to review this. It's as designed. Currently, we don't anticipate that. But when we get to the budget slide, I did talk to the contingencies and other price escalations that are on the slide. But with present, it's going to the store for you as designed. And we don't anticipate additional costs at this time.
We'll see.
Anyone else at this point?
And the architect did provide a full set of renderings. What's presented here is Zone A, and from two vantage points. First, from Princess Anne Road, and then again from James Madison Boulevard. So the current view or existing from Princess Anne and the enhancements, again, the eight-foot-tall steel, non-climbable steel fence. There's spikes at the top, those are angled outward. It is called an impasse rail. It helps discourage people from climbing the fence. It's also aesthetically pleasing and again, consistent with the architectural theme of the municipal center. Lines, here is the view from James Madison and the installed fence. It terminates adjacent to the building. It is not tied to the building or fastened to the building. So it's important that we get it terminated at convenient points or logical points on the building as close as possible to prevent any unwanted access. It also comes up flush to the building, as you see it here, so that it will prevent the formation of voids or barriers. Any questions on that? Presently, we've talked the project timeline. So it's currently under design. As we discussed, the design completion is in approximately two weeks. So a complete design package then. I'm noting an advertisement in October or November of 2022. You'll notice the second bullet from the bottom of the page is a DSC review, which we anticipate takes about 30 or 45 days. Hence, the advertisement this fall. With that contract award in January, and then work, start of work in February 2023, with substantial completion approximately a year from now. And then the historical review board tomorrow, and that paperwork is going to then on July 8th. My PM and I have been answering questions for the staff, rather, the planning staff in preparation.
John.
I just have a question on that time to do a DSC review. Here, all the impervious surface is there. We're not removing the brick wall. We're putting up a fence. Why does that level of modification? I'd just like an answer later. But I'd like to know what about that minimal amount of effort takes 30 to 45 days to review? If that's true, we have a problem. I'd like an answer why that takes so long.
And the estimated budget requirements, as discussed previously, we are funded in the amount of $250,000 to complete the design. Total design fees are the one-line item that has been obligated. The design is near completion, the renderings are complete. The construction estimate from the architect is about $645,000. And I put a 15% escalation was added to that to account for labor and market volatility and also for the cameras, monitor room, and cable. We are basing this price off a quote for March, and likewise, a small escalation on that to account for fluctuation, potential volatility in the prices. The 25% contingency, and with the previous funding, it winds up with a budget requirement of about $840,000 to complete the work. Based on the last slide, which is the next steps, currently appears that a budget transfer request is on the agenda today for council's consideration. And this was technically the end of my preview. If there were any further questions.
Hey, John.
Of what?
John, the now.
Who is the approval authority to exercise things that drive use of the contingency funds? Who, who is that person? Is that LJ?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. That's all I needed to know. And that's all, I just want to know who it is. That's someone on the city side that can make sure that that's necessary. Thank you.
Up to 25% of the contract, I'm authorized to make that decision. After that, it would need to go to the city manager.
I appreciate it very much.
Hey, Aaron, that road, man. Perhaps we can get a part of a closed session, security assessment to see, I'm just trying to figure out, have there been incidents maybe we have known about or something that would warrant the need to have such this implemented now? So. So I would like to have, you know, a security assessment. And maybe there are things that we can't share in public that have happened, but I, I like to know more about why is this such a, or need or something now, why we need to do it now.
Okay, can you, can you make a note of that, perhaps?
Got it, sir.
I get asked.
Okay, sure, ma'am.
I, I'm glad that Rocky and Lynn would welcome us and the judge's safety is very, very important to all of us. Thank you for that. Could you, this is a little bit different, but is there any update on the escalators that are for the courthouse?
The escalators, ma'am, are still under design, I think we're looking at October right now, if it's signed.
Completion in October, and then when would they be construction?
I can answer that for you, ma'am, I had to do, I had to do a brief on this earlier.
Oh, good, we need you up there.
Of course, LJ is always prepared.
Not always, ma'am, but I actually.
It's always a roaming handheld cameraman.
The escalators are in the final stages of their design, we're expecting that design to be wrapping up the end of this year. We're looking to go to, to bid early in the next year, thinking late January, probably, we're hopeful. And with the award to be sometime in April, about a year to eighteen months of construction time. So we're hopeful that we'll be under construction April, May of 23, with wrapping it up in April or May, June of 24. You know, we're, I know I'm not giving you strong firm answers, but we're in a very weird environment as it relates to bidding and contracts and supply chain issues. So, but that's, that's the current schedule we're working from, we think it's a very reasonable schedule, we think we can get it done, but I'm touching my bets a little bit.
Thank you so much, LJ.
Okay, John.
I'll do it for you, Steve. You know, there are, there are a lot of people that have had escalators moving sidewalks of, let's say, less than favorable reliability. So I hope that in your looking, you're looking around for people who've installed and types of installations and the maker of escalators that have high reliability and heavy use. You can just think of the moving sidewalk problems at Norfolk Airport and that's an example of that didn't work out so well. So I hope that that's part of the evaluation is we're really seeing the manufacturers of the escalators being installed and as to their reliability in places of heavy volume, to so that we don't get something that's gonna be the, or repeat of what Norfolk experienced with their walking sidewalk escalators there.
Yes, sir, I believe we've learned our lesson on the escalators thing.
That was a hard one.
Okay, Leonard.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Councilmember Holcomb and I were assigned as liaisons four or five weeks ago to meet with the judges and staff and consultants on this issue. This design had been underway for a while by the time we got over there. This was the preferred alternative of the judges. They played some videos for us of some altercations that had occurred. They're very concerned, as you can see with those low brick walls, they are right out there with people's families they've sent us. And they're very concerned about their safety and look at this as an issue that needs to be expedited. Ergo, Rocky and I being liaisons to go over there and bring it back to the council. The big thing that the steel walls do is a visual impediment to anybody to be able to see in when the judges are accessing their vehicles. That's their primary concern and then certainly the way they're designed, people can't climb in and wait for the judges in the parking area. And that's another thing that was accomplished with this. I do agree with Mr. Moss, though, about the time it takes for the DSC review. And I hope that that can be expedited because I'm not sure what all these have reviewed for a month and a half over there to install some fences. And I'd like to know if we can set a record for DSC review on this particular project, is that important to the judges?
Yeah, perhaps we can send a record on DSC review for every project that comes across your test. Okay.
North side.
Yeah, got it.
If I just add briefly, as you all know, my wife is retired, she's now a misdemeanor relations court judge. And ever since she was elected to that position twenty-seven years ago, I've been very concerned about this problem. It is, it, when it needs fixing, it's been the fixing hard. It's a great time to do it, so I just could say, as someone who's kind of lived with it, at least vicariously, and I've been there myself many times and seen it, I've never seen an incident, but I witnessed the, the problem firsthand and my wife witnessed it every day, so I hope we can move forward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for all concern, we had tons of council conversation and, you know, we live in a dangerous world for a lot of reasons. The more we can do to make, we got a huge campus here and we gotta make sure that everybody is, you know, we safe. All right, moving on, Rudy Loop and Convention Center, our request for information, update. Hey, Taylor, how do you do?
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm doing well, thank you, good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Council, welcome, Councilman Miles. And, and Mayor, if I may take a, a small indulgence, just like to acknowledge my colleague, Ken Chandler, who, who filled in for the ball today, doing a fine job.
He looks good today, doesn't he?
He sure does, he sure does. And so Kathy's looking our proposal here and will dive right in. I can fill a little time while we're doing that to say a, a thanks to the two councilmembers that are here today that joined us last night for a late night with Resort Beach Civic League. It's always nice to have two councilmembers, councilmembers with meetings like that with us, but we had a, had a good ball beat.
Hey, we have a technical being there. New space there.
Ah, here we go.
All right, Mayor, here we are. And so. Mayor, for me, we'll jump right to this.
Go, go right through.
And so the, what we have are the responses to the RFII. So for the, to remind the public, an RFII, that's a request for ideas and information. Crease here, we're the first locally ever to use the term RFII.
Yeah, we go to Virginia Beach, leave the way.
Every time, yes, sir. And so, just to remind you all what we, of the process that we went through, we were seeking interest and ideas for the overall development of Rudy Loop. The document was issued on May 26th of this year. Three responses were received on July 25th, we'll be going through this in a moment. The RFII references, the document itself referenced your 2030 RASAP plan and, and spoke to the desire for open space in this area, preserved the public amenities of the very day. In order to be considered for Phase Two, we can be a full RFII processes for mine. It was, it was our thought that a proposal must be submitted in Phase One. Here are the parcels in play, so you can see in yellow, I'll point it here, those are owned by the city. The, the parcels in sort of, we'll call that a shade of pink, are, are owned by the, our development authority. We're totaling six point two acres, about five point seven for the city and half an acre for the development authority. I'll quickly tell you that for orientation, this is just to sort of fit it on the slide. If you were to turn this ninety degrees up, you would see this is north, as here is Ford Street and Fifth Street. Okay, our requirements, as it was, it was your intention that we only receive ideas and informational proposals. We limited, we put a page limit of twenty pages on respondents, the developer's concept and, and then other things that were required. The, the developer's concept and any anticipated public participation, the developer's current, the development team's current financial capacity, examples and photos of experience with similar projects, list of current active development projects, development team resources, conflict disclosures, and then references. First, we received, as I mentioned, three proposals. The first that we'll cover today is Bruce Smith Enterprises LLC, along with Madison Marquette, that developed retail spaces and mixed use, mixed use spaces primarily in Washington DC and then Armaude Hopford here in Virginia Beach. There were, where Mr. Smith's team did not submit any renderings, what they, what they allowed were, were square footages that could be assigned to specific uses, important to note at this point. There was nothing I found in the proposal to suggest that this was a, that these were firm square footages more, it seemed, and this is, and, and when I say it seems, that's not to be cagey, it's just to, it's just to confirm that we've had, we not had communication with the developers that submitted these proposals at this point, because we needed to have this conversation through the public first. But I, I would tell you that these are, these are potential uses that could be moved up and down at your, at your pleasure should you choose this team. But that said, there were seventy-five thousand square feet for retail food and beverage, two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet for a four story hotel, purposes of twelve stories, eighty-five thousand square feet of a condominium hotel and nine stories, a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet of apartments, a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet assigned to a three star hotel, an eight hundred and seventy-five space parking garage. And you see there fifty-seven of these, fifty-seven of those being surface parking. And then four point one, call it acres attributed to park, with sidewalk public amenities to include stage, artwork, sports, dog park and stuff.
Taylor, we got a quick question.
Let me ask a real quick question, and for each of these, I'd really like to know what the expectations are from the city for these, for these developments? What, what they're looking for from us?
Yes, ma'am, and so it's, it's important to note with, with, and so we're gonna give you that with each of these. With this, there was a, and, and Vice Mayor, we're, we're gonna provide you what information we have at this point. What it's important for me to say at this is we, since we've had no conversation with the developer, it's hard for me to, to have a refined understanding of what that would be, but we'll certainly give you everything we have, we have on that.
Yeah, and wasn't just this one, some of the others didn't, was sketchy on what they expected from us.
Yes, and so with this, the, the, the commercial, what they're saying development, we're interpreting to be commercial uses. But again, that's, that's what I've got at this point. And then they asked if the city, that the city pay for infrastructure, public parking garage, the public parking, and, and a potential convention space for the hotel. So that was, that was the request of this first proposal, should you choose to exercise this entire program. Then from Gold Key PHR, we were, you received a proposal that had two options. The first of those, a seven acre, and we do have renderings for this, a seven acre park, dog park, skate park, public party, and a surf hall of fame walk, five hundred and twenty-two spaces attributed to a parking garage, sixty-six on-street parking spaces, one hundred and seventy-seven units of multifamily wrapping the proposed garage with retail and commercial space on the, the ground floor of the garage. And so, Vice Mayor, to your question, there was no specific public participation that was identified as part of this proposal. However, that is something that I do anticipate, if we were to sit down with the developer, we would, we would be able to bring you quick refinement up, but there was nothing requested as part, because this was purely an idea. To give you, here is the idea. As you can see, interesting, for those of you that are familiar and remember your RASAP plan, this diagram will look very, very familiar, because that is, that is very close to what's in, what's in the RASAP plan. But the one thing that I'll, I'll call to your attention here is you'll see there's a parking garage with some circus parking. And then you see retail and commercial, that, I'm assuming that would be the ground floor, retail and commercial, along with multifamily, which, which I am assuming would wrap the garage. And so, so here you essentially have a parking structure, public, sort of street parking, I shouldn't say, but a parking structure, street parking, and then one or two levels, I would suppose, of, of retail. The remainder given, coming up to the height of the garage and multifamily units, and we know from the prior, from this prior page that's roughly one hundred and seventy-seven multifamily units. Gold Key submitted a second option. Much of this is the same, the only, the big thing that we would call out as the difference would be the last bullet, a two hundred and fifty room hotel constructed on the property currently known as The Schooner. Again, there's also no public participation that was requested as part of this proposal. Again, we see a very similar park design, the parking garage, retail and commercial space, the multifamily housing. And then here where the, where the schooner currently sits, which it's important that I, that I note at this point, the city of Virginia Beach does not own The Schooner Hotel, so this is not a piece of this project that we can speak for, that we can apply on, but we do not own this property. It is privately held and solely within the hands of the private sector at this point, yes, sir?
So my question is that if that property is privately owned, then why is it in the, are?
I can't answer that at this point. Councilmember, that, that's a great question, the, I cannot answer it at this point as a, as again, you're head staff, without guidance from you all, we have not dialogued with the developers directly on these projects. But what I can tell you is that this, this, this plan does propose a hotel with some convention uses on, on what is currently a privately held park.
I think it's well known that hotels have offers at sale.
Yes, it is.
I mean, that's a bit, the long-term owners of it.
Well, my, I guess my question would be then who would be the buyer? At acquisition of the city, I mean, we have discussed acquisition of The Schooner.
So, 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 Councilmember, I guess the plea, the plea is to give me to say that spaces, to Councilmember Tower's point, we do know of offers in the market for the property. That said, there is, the city has not advanced in offer regarding that property to, to the, to the owners as yet. Certainly not that's been publicly discussed and voted on by this body, so in, in the present, we would not. The, the easiest thing for me to say at this point is that I don't know the answer to, to how that, to how that would play out. Other than to tell you that it is in the proposal that we have here today. And then, and then here is one more rendering of what the, a hotel tower with convention space on, on The Schooner site could look like. I, I don't wanna say it would look like that, because again, this is, this, we, we just have a drawing, but that is, that is what we have in the present. Finally, from the Virginia Gentlemen Foundation, we have a proposal. And then option one of that, of that project would be a park with a skate park, playground and event stage, six hundred and sixty-five spaces attributed to a parking garage, a surf museum, concessions, restroom wrapped in garage, open space design with more grass than hardscape and jettie walk. And again, there's no specific public participation identified at this time. However, for this use, for this proposal in particular, as this is effectively a park, I can't imagine that there won't be a request for public participation in this. That said, what you have here, you have a parking structure, the uses that they mentioned around it and the park. Again, very similar to what you saw in the RASAP plan. Option two, the, essentially the same thing, the same uses, but then you see more hardscape for the fishing plaza on the perimeter of the site. And again, we've got a conversation about, about public participation to have on this in the future. But here again, what we see is, again, the, the majority of the site under control, with the exception of the parking structure in the facility, in the, the facility wrapped in the, the ground floor of the parking structure. We see the rest of this more hardscape but maintained for use by the public. That is, that is what we have at present. Are there any que, any further questions for me on?
Hey, any questions at all, Rosemary?
I know Mr. Branch asked for a communications plan, once we got these, we could go out to the public and hear from the public.
So, so yes, I do think that there, there is a, we are contemplating a, a conversation a little later in the day about what you all would like us to do with the information we've received and next steps. Right, your question.
That's what's really important is what the public has to. That's what's really important, is what the public has to, what the public thinks, because this is, this is their property.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else at this point?
Two things. One, I mentioned earlier, would we be able to have a redacted copy of the actual things that were submitted and be made available to the public, and I was sure that that could happen. I would hope that before we leave today, at least the council members would have that, so as they engage the public, they have something more than just the PowerPoint would be very helpful. And, and, and to Mosley's point, I think it would be good to have like some kind of matrix, that when people are looking, they can see just how they varied on a single page versus having to flip on about other people, that's a, a reference point, I think it makes it easier for folks. And I understand that, I've heard, I think there may be a internal option, so that's, that, if, because, so it's the reason why I'm asking, because each of these things all involve, I think, at the end, us building the parking garage. I think that's, because no one's built anything without public participation, even if it's making money, without paying for the garage, and that's probably the biggest single cost component. So, if we are looking at a all-public option, it would be good, when we're talking about this, to know what that is, I think, even if it might, might come a little later, I think that would be helpful, because I've heard that from other people, it's why can't it, why are we not developing it just as a city if we're building garages? So if that's possible, if not, I understand, but that would be good.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, thank you for that, and we do have more information coming to you very shortly on that, on that specific issue of what, what a public option looks like.
Well, you're always ahead of this thing.
Right, anybody else at this point? I think we'll be discussing this a little bit later, too. All right, yeah.
Mayor, I can throw one more thing.
Oh, go for it.
There was an item, obviously there was a second RFI that was out specifically on the, the R, the RFI that was put out for use in divisions that are lost, that's not quite ready for, for discussion yet, we're refining some points in there, I want to apologize for the mistake that was made by, by that being loaded here in the session, but we will have more information for you on that shortly, but we just, that was not quite ready for, for, for presentation yet, as we're still trying to understand some of the information.
Okay, you know, good work, I appreciate it overall. Further discussions in the future, Matt. Okay? All right, um, right now then, we'll move on to changes to the city's election system update. Hey, Chris, how you doing?
Great, Mayor, thank you, and Vice Mayor, and our members of council for having me today. Happy to brief you and the public on kind of where things stand with our city council and school board election system going into November of this year. This, we will cover kind of what our pre-existing system was prior to the events of the last couple of years with the court case and the, and the legislative changes, we'll talk about the Holloway case that prompted the implementation of the system that the city's using in 2022, and also kind of cover what the general assembly did in 2021 that affects the city's voting system, and finally, talk about where we go from here. The city's system, as, as everyone at the table knows, but the public may not know, is governed by a city charter, three point oh one, enacted by the general assembly, provides for eleven members of city council, members allocated such that we have four members, including the mayor, who are elected at large and may reside anywhere in the city. We also have seven members who are elected by the, the city at large but must live in the residence district for the district they're seeking to represent, and of course, our residence districts have to be of approximately equal population. This system has existed since nineteen ninety-six, but it's substantially the same as one that the city's had in place shortly after the merger of the town of Virginia Beach and Princeton County in the sixties. There were two referenda in nineteen ninety's about whether to go to a ward system or not, they had differing outcomes, the more recent one saying that the public did not want to go to a ward system, and then, you know, from your prior work on the council, that we have to adjust our district boundaries every ten years after the decennial census is taken by the federal government. Our school board is elected using essentially the same method per different provision of the city charter, the one difference is the school board chair is not elected by the public at large but by the board, and so they functionally have four at-large members versus the city council's system under the charter, being three at-large members plus the mayor. You'll recall that the city's system came under challenge in two thousand and seventeen when Latasha Holloway filed her suit in district court, in Norfolk District of Federal Court, that case proceeded the trial in October of two thousand and twenty, we did not get a liability ruling in the case until March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, six months later, and then the remedial order, which implemented the system that you are using for November two thousand and twenty-two, was ordered by the trial court in December of, of last year. The Court of Appeals, the Court of Appeals directed appeal of the case, the Court of Appeals vacated the trial court's orders two and a half weeks ago, July twenty-seventh, and then certainly in the middle of the Holloway case, there were general assembly changes, and importantly, for timeline purposes, it was after the city had tried the case in federal court in October two thousand and twenty, but before the court ruled in November, I'm sorry, in March two thousand and twenty-one, that the general assembly made several important changes to state law governing election systems. A little bit more about the Holloway case, the original Holloway case challenged the city's system, saying that the city should move to a single minority, majority district, that had always been impossible under Virginia, or under the city's demographics based upon the diversity and the, the level of integration of our communities. In two thousand and eighteen, when a second plaintiff, George Allen, entered the case, and a D.C. public interest law firm, Cambian Legal Center became involved, the theory of the case changed, instead of asserting the single minority claim, it asserted what we call a coalition claim, where it asserted that it would be possible to draw at least one and perhaps more, multiple minority, combined minority districts that could be majority-minority, and elect council members of the minority groups of choice. The city contested that, one of the central pieces of the plaintiff's allegation was that our, our various minority communities in Virginia Beach favor the same candidates and political causes, we don't believe that is accurate, and we presented evidence, not very, the court, like I said, heard the trial in October of two thousand and twenty and did not at that time issue a ruling. After we rested the trial and briefed the case, the general assembly took two significant actions, the first one was in House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight, and that provided that where a district has what we call, or a locality has what we call residence districts, those districts by operation of state law now become ward districts. So, your city charter was functionally amended by House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight to make your seven residence districts into ward districts, and this would also be equally applicable to the school board, and there was a general law that applied around the state, but other than Virginia Beach, there are only, I think, a couple of, of, of communities that were affected by the law. The other change was the general assembly's adoption of the Virginia Voting Rights Act. There are a couple of things that are important about this, for purposes of your at-large method of election, which again is those other three seats that are elected both by members of the public and the candidate can live anywhere in the city, that an at-large method of election, including one that combines at-large election districts, or at-large elections with district or ward-based elections, shall not be imposed in any manner that impairs the ability of members of a protected class to let candidates of its choice or to its ability to influence the outcome of an election. So that, and that created also a civil right of action by a private plaintiff to sue a locality if they impose a system that, that had any type of at-large selection that impaired the ability of members to, so much as influence the outcome of an election. The other piece of, of the general assembly's actions in creating the Virginia Voting Rights Act was to establish a preclearance process, either by the Virginia Attorney General or alternatively with a, a, a robust process of notice and comment with the possibly lawsuit at the end of that, and again, this bill is also equally applicable to our school board. So importantly, even if the Holloway case has never been brought, the, the two thousand and twenty-two, or the prior, prior system would have changed because of changes in state law, your seven residence districts would become wards going forward, and citizens would no longer elect all eleven members of city council. Moreover, there would be a possible challenge in the future to the remaining three at-large districts under the Virginia Voting Rights Act. So, all of this ties then into the, the Holloway case, after the trial court, or after the law was changed, particularly as to the residence districts becoming ward districts, which we call House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight, the trial court ruled that the city's historical system violated Section Two of the Voting Rights Act under this coalition theory, where three, three minority groups asserted rights together and explained that, that, or enjoined for their elections using that system. We, we then spent the next seven or eight months providing information to the court to allow it to draw new districts and use a new system, ultimately, those districts were drawn by a special master who, the court imposed his plan, which is a ten-one ward system, where you only get to vote for the rest of the, the district in which you live and the mayor, and it also incorporated three of those ten districts being what we call minority opportunity districts, which was something that was important, obviously, to the plaintiffs in the court, and, and the special master did, however, also incorporate the two thousand and twenty census data, so it functionally accomplished a, a decennial redistricting without the city of Virginia Beach or this body acting to adopt a redistricting ordinance. The city began the supplementation of the ten-one system immediately upon receiving the remedial order, even while appealing the case to the Fourth Circuit. The case was briefed and argued in the spring, and then July twenty-seventh, we received a ruling that vacated the U.S. District Court's liability and remedial orders, and ruled very specifically, in what we call, as lawyers, narrow grounds, that, that the case was mooted by House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight's adoption and being signed into law prior to the trial court ruling. What it essentially said was, because the system that was challenged in court no longer existed by operation of state law, there was no legal basis to, to challenge it or for the trial court to enter a remedy against it. So, what, what, what appellate court did not do is make a ruling on what we call the underlying merits, i.e. these legal arguments as to whether plaintiffs factually proved a coalition exists and under Virginia data and, and Virginia Beach qualitative and quantitative evidence, and also, it did not rule on whether even such a claim can be asserted under Section Two of the Voting Rights Act, where various other us circuits in the federal circuit system had ruled in opposite ways. So, what comes next? This is kind of the, the important part for the public and, and certainly for, for the members of the body. The city is not technically under a court order regarding its system as we sit here today, the Fourth Circuit has reversed and, and vacated the, the trial court's remedial and its liability orders. What that means in particular is that, under applicable case law, plaintiffs are no longer prevailing parties, which would entitle them to attorney's fees, so the attorney's fees claims they have asserted, they, they should not prevail on at this point, given the posture of the case, but the case was remanded to the trial court for the plaintiff to assert amended complaint, claims, if it believe it has them now or potentially in the future. So, based on the city's efforts to implement the ten-one system, starting again right after the, the trial court's ruling in, in late December of two thousand and twenty-one, the, the ten-one ward system with the three minority opportunity districts was precleared by the Virginia Attorney General. The candidate filing deadline passed back in June of this year, which was before we got our appellate court ruling, precincts and polling locations have been updated to reflect the ten-one system the court ordered, and that is, I know that this body considered those precincts and polling locations just last week and approved those, so there'll be mailers going out to the public in, in short order from the voter registrar advising people of their precinct location, as well as what, what local district they live in for purposes of, of voting, and certainly, the question has been asked, what, what could we do since we're not under a federal court order to, to change the system for this election? And the answer is functionally nothing. The, the, any change for November twenty-two would involve having to change the candidate filing deadline that's already passed, that is an act of state law, you would have to bring back the general assembly to act in a special section on a local issue, and I, I can't imagine there would be much, much interest in doing that. Additionally, the, the ballot deadline for printing the ballots is this Friday, so functionally there would just be no way to change the system, given at the date that the appellate court ruled. Going forward, however, you have not determined your system for November twenty, twenty-four and beyond. The charter, which is your, your operative document for elections while you're, when you're not under a federal court order, provides for a seven-three-one system, but that seven-three-one system under House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight makes those seven residence districts into ward districts. The city has the ability to pursue charter or statutory changes in either the two thousand and twenty-three general assembly session or the general, the two thousand and twenty-four general assembly session, which would allow you to, if the general assembly blessed certain changes, to implement those for your November two thousand and twenty-four council election, which will be the next council election after the one that's upcoming this year. But importantly, any system that, that you wish to, wish to change to would need to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, with the Virginia Voting Rights Act, and with House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight, unless any or all of those laws were changed somehow. And again, the Holloway case remains pending in the U.S. District Court, so there is essentially a kind of a informal preclearance process that the appellate court created, whereby the, the trial court can review any changes that we make if the plaintiffs wish to come back and challenge them. And so, if you were to decide to change either your districts or your system or both, you would likely need to adopt a redistricting ordinance, which you can do once every ten years, and you haven't done yet. So, certainly if you're going to have an at-large system, if that were where the body went and state law challenges to that system were to be overcome, you would not need to do a redistricting, but for any system that has districts, you would need to adopt a redistricting ordinance. So, just as a summary, and particularly for, for public consideration, is this November twenty-two, the city council and school board will have elections under the ten-one ward system, and that beyond this election, your system is undetermined, and that will be subject to city council consideration going forward. And, and certainly, any, any change, of course, would have to comply with state and federal law as it has evolved over time. Any questions?
John?
I know we've chatted about this before, the Supreme Court is picking up this term, forty-one October, a very significant case on Section Two, where they stayed the appellate court, I think it was a Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, a decision, and upheld Alabama's drawing and not doing these minority coalitions and all that kind of things, they've taken that up this term. I realize we don't have that, but that is a key feedback that could intensely change the, whether or not influenced districts are constitutional, because that's a, that is a more than just Section Two. So I don't know, maybe not today, but it'd be okay, and if it just be a handout or a note, I think it would be good for the council, who doesn't have time to read all those things like I do, to get a summary of what that issue is, and that is a very fundamental issue they're talking about all over the legal circle, that could be a fundamental rewrite of what Section Two means and what's permissible.
Yes, sir, that's, that's true.
And that would radically change the degrees of freedom that any body would have in structuring their government and not being subject to litigation.
We'll be happy to provide that to you, Councilman.
Sure, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad we were able to have this discussion in public and in the open. I think you all know how very important voting is, and before again, my comments, again, I want to thank the local branch of the NAA, CP, and the Virginia Beach International Municipal Committee for coming out to a community meeting we have that, we hope Baptist Church. Speaking to this issue of voting, especially the Holloway Speaking to this issue of voting, especially the Holloway case, where the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals said that the case was mooted, but it was not on the merits of the case. So the merits of the case is what I want to speak to you today. And here's a direct quote from Judge Jackson's opinion that upset a lot of people. Unfortunately, the truth hurts. Accordingly, the court concludes that the history of racial discrimination has had a disproportionate impact on the education, employment, economic, and social conditions of the minority community. When you think about Virginia Beach and the history of Virginia Beach and Chris's County, talk about, think about Yoni Kinsville segregation. You think about the fact that African-Americans were not even allowed on the oceanfront. Yeah, they considered Chick's Beach to be the African-American beach to go to. You think about the economic discrimination where we just now trying to get all the recommendations from the disparity study implemented a couple of years ago, where, again, Virginia Beach ministers, international ministers, the local branch of the N A A C P, community leaders, pastors, all had to walk at Rudy Loop to say, hey, there needs to be equity and equality in the way our city does business with minorities within the city of Virginia Beach. Which leads me to my, the other point why I was so, and I remain upset, that there could be a majority of council people discussing an important topic where only three council people were left out. Two of those council people prior to Mr. Stino Malas being appointed were African-Americans. It remains to be seen if you were be excluded or included in that conversation. But no one in leadership has apologized. No one in leadership have addressed the situation. Instead, all I heard was justification that this is kind of common practice. The mayor and I are meeting next week, and I'm hopeful for a fruitful conversation. But Chris, I want to go back to slide three of your presentation. And I want to focus on, I'll let you get there.
Which one?
Slide three, I think it was. Yes, slide three, there you go.
That one.
I want to focus on the second to last bulletin point. There were two referendums in the nineties. The first referendum, where the people actually voted overwhelmingly to elect seven members of city council by voters in their respective districts. I have a copy, a picture of that referendum, and I'll read it to you. The question was, point blank and pretty straightforward, should city council request the General Assembly to amend the city's existing councilman electoral plans to provide for division of the city into seven districts of approximately equal population, with seven members to be elected only by the voters of their respective districts, and three members and the mayor be elected by and from the city at large? Now, members overwhelmingly supported that. Then comes the second referendum. Because they didn't like the way that that referendum turned out. When I say they, I mean the power elite, the status quo. Now we have a second referendum. So here, this is the second referendum. And now I want you to listen to how it's worded. And this for the people at home to understand, listen to how it's worded. So the city council member elected to represent a particular borough by elected by all qualified voters throughout the city and at-large system, rather than only be qualified, by only the qualified voters residing in that particular borough or ward system. If you wish to vote for all eleven seats, vote yes. If you prefer to vote only five of the eleven seats, vote no. The ambiguity in that question in itself should tell you all that you need to know. So again, my question is, why would the mayor and vice mayor, who wrote, who would have gone to speak to the majority of council members excluding three, saying that they were field testing a draft question with the majority of council members? I'm trying to understand, what was that field testing? What did that draft question look like? What did it state? How was it worded? Who structured it and who wrote it? I'd like to have input on that. I think it's very, very important that the public understand what that question is. Because as you see, back in the nineties, you have two different outcomes. And it's all predicated on how the question is worded. Now, as council members and as the public, supposed to come up with a question and make sure that it's worded in a way that people can understand and you can get true results from that. So that is, that is my question for, despite Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, is what did that draft question look like? Who helped to craft this draft question? What does it state? How was it worded and structured? And who wrote it? I didn't have a partake in it, I wasn't allowed. I didn't have, wasn't presented the opportunity to partake in that field testing.
Well, Aaron, I'm, you know, I'm gonna, I will address it. I'm looking forward to talking to you next week. I think one of the biggest problems a lot of people in the public had, you know, we have been talking about giving the voter the opportunity for years on how to vote. We haven't talked about random choice voting. You know, we've been through it all, you know, pretty well. We were actually going to kind of look at this, if I recall, about a year or two ago, you know, when Jessica Abbott wanted to put forward a referendum, okay? And the point is, though, you know, we had, you know, a judge's point, you know, ruling, and you know, followed up by a discussion in passage with the General Assembly, of which we were totally excluded from. And we were not notified of, by the sponsoring delegate that brought this forward. We were blindsided by that. But once again, you know, when we talk about, you know, bringing things forward. But the thing is, when we do bring things forward, you know, and once again, as I addressed to you in an email, you know, over the years, you know, sometimes we think about that. And a lot of things don't come to fruition because it may not be a good idea. And I think the important thing, Aaron, you got to remember, is that after discussion and reflection, we elected not to bring it forward for a number of what we consider.
That's the issue, Mr. Rouse. That's an issue, I like to rebuttal.
Okay, you will certainly have a thing, but right now, it's my time. Uh, you know, but the, you know, the point is, though, we did not bring it forward.
Who is we?
Mr. Rouse, I'm going to thank you not to interrupt.
Who is we, Mr. Mayor? I just want to be clear, I want you to be clear on who is we deciding not to bring what forward?
Okay, this was a concept, okay? Understand the concept of a concept. And I'm going to thank you not to interrupt again. You will have the opportunity.
Sure will.
Okay?
Sure.
But the other thing is, we decided not to bring it back. And the other thing is, Vice Mayor and I decided to put it out as a draft for everybody to understand on a Wednesday for full discussion. You know, so the point is, I don't understand the basis of your argument. And, you know, the point is, it did not come to any type of fruition. It would have come to a full council decision. I am sorry you aren't happy with the process. And I'm going to be honest with you, nothing will change.
You got the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a, there's a lot of things wrong with what you just said, I take exception to. First of all, who is we decided not to bring it forward since all of this body was not a part of that conversation? Second of all, just because you decided not to bring it forward, doesn't mean that was wrong, not done. That's like, I mean, and Mr. Hogan probably in the test, and this is where you'd rather not get in this conversation. That's like someone attempted to rob a bank, but because they weren't successful, it means, hey, no harm done. I didn't exactly rob today. So that, that argument falls flat, Mr. Mayor. The bottom, the bottom line, the very least, the least you can do is say, hey, I apologize. Everyone should have been contacted, regardless of your position, regardless of your support of ten-one system, your, your at, for at-large system. Respect for your, 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 your colleagues is due, Mr. Mayor. And not just for us, I don't sit here for Aaron Rouse, I sit here for the citizens of Virginia Beach. There are constituents who called me in my office asking me, well, what happened in that conversation? Who's a part of that conversation? Do we get a say-so in that conversation? Mr. Mayor, this is about the people of our city, voting in our city. Make sure everyone has that right. You keep saying we, we decided not to bring it forward. But what happens if we decided to bring it forward? Then what would be the value of my, of my input, Mr. Mayor?
Well, let me ask you this, wouldn't you?
No, answer my question first.
No.
What would be the value of my input if you, if we decided to?
You would have had input if it was put on the table.
Your point. You're missing the point, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay, let's maintain some work.
Sure, absolutely.
You got anything else?
Yes, I want to know what would be the value of my input and the three other, two other council members who were left out of that conversation? What would be the value of that input going forward if you and that group, who you still have not clarified who they were, decided to go forward?
Well, there would have been a draft that would have come out that would have been totally open enough to council discussion and public scrutiny. The fact is, it wasn't put forward. And then, and Mr. Rouse, when you decided to bring forward your resolution to pull the appeal, did you consult with us?
Absolutely. I brought, I gave it to you all. What do you mean? And I made my position very clear from the get-go, Mr. Mayor. I'm completely transparent.
Well, sometimes a phone call would be great, Aaron.
Well, you're deflecting from the issue at hand, let's stay on top of it.
Yeah, that is.
Let's stay on top of it. I think what's, what's apparently, what's apparent is that this has been, as you said in your highly inflammatory email, fourteen years you've done things this way. And fourteen years has been unacceptable. Fourteen years the public has been calling for transparency. And we're talking about voting rights. We're not talking about some deal or some, in some district. We're talking about voting rights. The very basis of our democracy, of our republic, in these, here, United States.
So you don't think the public should have an input in the way that they vote? It should be imposed on them? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Rouse?
What are you talking about, Mr. Mayor? I've always, as a, as a, as a recall, as I recall, I voted for Jessica Abbott's resolution. I voted to ask the people, when the majority of the council people voted that down, Mr. Mayor, I've been completely transparent. And your issue with the delegate who you all say left you out of that discussion is with that delegate. I'm talking about this body, how we operate. It can't control what anyone else does, Mr. Mayor. And, excuse me, and for the record, your accusations and keep saying, which is highly inflammatory in your email, that I somehow worked with the delegate to get House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight for him, is completely false. You know, you know, when I found out about House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight, when yourself and the former vice mayor at the time sent the letter on behalf of this body, once again, saying we oppose House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight, when we did not even discuss it as a group. So this is recurrent behavior over and over and over again. And I had to issue them, I said, Mr. Mayor, how can you? And I get very spirited about this, so let me.
Oh, don't tell me, tell me.
Mr. Mayor, how can you all, again, sit here and say city council opposes a house bill, which we did not even discuss as a group? I say, you, you have all the authority within your personal office and as a citizen of this, of this great nation, to oppose and support any bill. But, Mr. Mayor, please don't deny me the opportunity to oppose and do the same or support and do the same.
Aaron, let me put it this way. Every councilman, especially, you know, since I got to Calhoun, has the right to pursue a direction that they want to. A lot of times, we get blindsided with resolutions when there is no discussions come up that are highly controversial. We accept that. And I'm going to make a point, and this is what I'm going to stick to. Once again, when we decide to talk about, you know, the possibility of bringing something forward, and then we decide it's not in the best interest of it, and therefore, we do not do it, but we're being criticized, you know, we did not bring it forward for a lot of the reasons that you were saying. That, in fact, you know, the decision came in late. We did not have enough time to educate the public on it. So I think, quite frankly, your point is moot. Tell you what, you and I can discuss this in public, in private, next week, okay? Yes, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to have this very spirited and tough conversation. But let's remember, actions have consequences. We're here talking about this because of actions that have been taken. And so I certainly have to listen and consider my colleague, Councilmember Rouse's concerns, because, you know, there was some exclusion that took place. And I certainly also hear the mayor as he explains what happened. But I, I think it's important that we are having this conversation because I don't want to see this type of process repeated. Because this is, as was already said, is regarding voting rights. You know, people have fought for these rights, died for these rights. It's highly important that we are transparent in what we're doing going forward. I'm really concerned about the public. This is a very precarious situation that they're in. They're trying to figure out what to do come November. And I think the staff has done a great job, you know, getting out front, doing the education piece and, and, and working to educate. But we really do need to focus on how we are going to move forward, how we are keeping the public engaged, involved, educated on this issue, and to make sure that as we do move forward, we don't leave anybody behind, whether it's council members, residents, community input, or, or what have you. We all need to be moving forward in this difficult situation in time to ensure that the community knows what they need to do for November and going forward. That's where our efforts really should be focused on now. Because that's going to really impact the outcome of this election, where the people know what to do, how to do it, where to do it. That's going to impact this body and the city. And so I will just appreciate going forward, just having these conversations, whether you're Republican or Democrat, it shouldn't really matter. This, these issues are nonpartisan. We were elected in these seats to discuss issues that are nonpartisan. So please, if you're working on a matter of such importance as Voting Rights Act or any other matter, please consider everyone in the conversation. I certainly think it's important that we make sure the community has involvement and engagement in what we're doing. I think, I think we all want that. And again, I just want to make sure we're moving forward together in this process to, you know, to address the future. Because that's, that's highly important right now.
Okay, Delcino and then Barbara.
Yes, thank you all. First of all, thank you all for this opportunity to serve with you. Thank you for your support. Being a communications professional, I think we're dealing with two different paths here. One, let's make sure we get the information out to folks what to expect November, this November. And then certainly collaborating with our city attorney and our community, our communication staff, Tiffany and her team, in terms of what happens next. It's important to get that community engagement through and often throughout the process so we don't muddy the waters. A lot of folks don't know what district they're in, let's educate them on that. A lot of people don't, don't know who the candidates are and that sort of thing. That's what I'm hearing a lot out there. Who is Bay Side? What is Bay Side and that sort of thing, just, just from the people I'm talking to. But I think it's important to focus that this is really a two-pronged approach. Let's get through November, and then this will supersede my term here. But certainly, I stand ready to continue service in helping to communicate and engage the community about what's going to happen next. And whatever influence and topic experts we need to come in to help us to make those decisions, I think is bodily important moving forward, to make sure that everyone's at the table during this process. And certainly, there's nothing to say that we can't start that now. But I think for clarity and for, from a communication standpoint, let's focus on what we want the public to expect in November. Because if we put too many messages out there, it's going to confuse individuals. And I think as a professional, as a PR person, let's be crystal clear on what to expect when they walk in that booth or if they vote early by the time the November elections take place. So whatever help I can do there with communications, we have a crack staff here to get that out. And let's not rely on just one mode of communication. Let's not just rely on social media, send things out in the mail. You all have your constituents, you have your public meetings, you're in your town halls. Let's utilize and leverage those platforms in order to make sure that the public is fully informed and prepared.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Barbara, then.
Well, I agree totally with what Del Cino just said, and I'm really concerned about the confusion that is gonna be around on Election Day. I mean, we've got, I guess, three of these wards where people are gonna go to the polls and there's not even gonna be a city council vote on there, and they're gonna, what in the world happened? But this is the important thing, and we, we really can't get to this point and, and start accusing each other of anything. There's a lot of confusion, and it's caused by this whole background of what's occurred the last couple of years that we're here now having to handle this situation that has been brought to us that we didn't ask for. But we know that our charter has required that if we wanted to change anything about our voting system, we have to have a referendum. And then we go to the Journal Assembly and ask that it be adopted as the people voted on it. That's our charter. And that's the way the city had always operated up until a little bit ago. And those two referenda in November, in, in the nineties were caused because that first question was very, very confusing to people because it addressed two items, not just one. At that time, we had seven districts, but they were the old historical districts. And over time, they had grown to be very different in their numbers of population. I think the Blackwater borough at that time had probably less than two thousand people in it, and Kempsville had seventy thousand people. And so that referendum was primarily to see, should we change the districts so that they were fairly equally populated? But then they also tacked on the question of having them be only voted for by the people who lived in the district. And so what happened after the vote and everything, people said, wait a minute, that wasn't what I thought it was. And all you have to do is go back and look at all the records and find it. So then, at the Journal Assembly's request, I think Senator Holland, we had another question that dealt. We went ahead and, and made the boroughs equally populated, but then we had a second question about the issue of whether they should be directly elected just as, as boards or if it should continue to be at large. And that was at the public's demand because they said, we didn't understand that question. So I think those of us who know that you've got to have a very good question that's very simple for people to know exactly what they're voting on. And right at this point, I don't know what that question would be, given this confusion we've got. And so I think very definitely, we do need to ask the people something about their system, but I couldn't begin to tell you what that question should be because it's too confusing right now. We've really got to get past November, and then we decide what we can do going forward. But the people should have a vote, and that's what's wrong with where we are now. The people didn't have anything to say, any input in this. And, and now they're gonna be really confused November eighth, or if they do early voting before then. And they're gonna look at us and say, what did you do to us? And we're gonna say, screw it, but this is what we're, we're faced with. And so I think we've really got to look at what we're going to do to inform everybody about what this election is going to be like. Because I think folks are going to be mighty, mighty confused. And we've really got to, to, you know, forget all of the past and say, okay, starting right now, where do we go from here? I clearly wanted to have the referendum, and that's what I put in my letter to the Journal Assembly because I think we were all told we could, we could put forward our, our concerns when they were looking at this change a year or so ago. I did not feel that twenty twenty was the right time for it because we were in the middle of a pandemic and we couldn't have the, the conversations with the public that we would need to have. And that's why we didn't have our, our flooding bond referendum in twenty twenty either. We did it in twenty twenty-one. That would have been the ideal time, but we were not allowed to do that. And so now we're faced with cleaning up all of this stuff and trying to come to some way of answering all of this to the public in a fashion that everybody is going to at least understand what they're, they're being asked to vote on. And I think we've got to do a lot to, to put it all out, more than just sending a postcard saying, you're gonna vote in District so and so and you're voting this precinct. It's got to be more than that. Maybe it needs to start with some really good maps. Because I have to tell you, I cannot tell anybody what the District Two boundaries are exactly. I think it's confusing to everybody, but, but the three people who are going to be representing wards that they have not been elected to, I think that's gonna confuse people even more because there are three, right, that won't have a vote this time. It's gonna be, it's gonna be something, and, and that was why when the second referendum occurred in, in, in the nineties, they said, we need to tell people exactly what's, what's gonna mean if you vote yes and exactly what it's gonna mean if you vote no. Well, that was the reason for that wording. And I don't know, you know, what we, how we're going to present this to the public now. I think we certainly got to not be accusing anybody of anything, but just saying, this is what we have. What are we gonna do going forward? And let the past be the past.
Okay, thank you. One more to then, Aaron.
Well, I was just gonna say to Del Cino, with your background in communication, we did approve a communication plan some months ago on this issue. But it would be great if you could get involved in that and take a good look at it. With your background and experience, that would be a big favor to all of us, I think.
That's why I'm here, anyway I can.
Right. We'll take a look at our.
And you give me free now.
Seriously, if you take a look at what we're doing and any improvements we need, that would be most appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron. Two things. I think accusations is one thing, but having fact is another. That's just, you can accuse somebody of one thing, but then having fact is another. So I just wanna address that. There were three people who were left out of a conversation. That's fact. That's not accusation. Not accusing anyone of leaving us out to be that, that actually happened. The other thing is, we talked about that, you know, ninety-six referendum. You know, it's important to do your homework. I mean, it's important to go through and do your homework. So, I mean, hearing council people say that people at the time were confused about it. Well, doing my homework, here's a letter to the editor from Virginia Pilot from what people may have thought during that time. Again, this is not indicative of the whole city, it's just one person's perspective, but they thought passionately enough to write a letter to the editor. And this is what they stated. "I am very disappointed and distressed to read the wording of the proposed referendum to be placed on the ballot in May. After the previous vote on this subject, in spite of the majority approval the referendum received, we were told that many of us didn't understand what we were voting for and that the wording of the referendum was confusing. I totally disagree with that statement, but this is past history. Now we have the opportunity to try again. After reading the proposed wording for the new referendum, I cannot believe that it would be placed on the ballot as a fair and impartial item to be voted on. Talk about confusing. The beginning is satisfactory, but when we reached the part where we are offered the opportunity to vote for all eleven candidates or only five, I find it harder than anyone to consider this to be fair and clear wording. Without a doubt, this wording shows me that the city council wants to, wants the situation to remain status quo. I personally will do all I can to effect change in May." And that was from someone who voted during that time. And so while there's certain perspectives, say it's, it's confusing for other people like Ms. Marjorie Bueno at the time, say, it wasn't confusing. We understood exactly what the question was. And so I think it's important to note that. And again, I, I think it is. Going forward should be our, our main objective to make sure we communicate with our citizens as well as the reason why I sponsored the Communications Office budget to be expanded, to include not only sending a postcard, but making sure that we can educate everyone and inform the public on voting system. And so, yes, I, I, I agree with that. And thank you, Del Cino, for bringing whatever expertise you can to help us do that. But I know our communications director, Pachter, she, she's doing a great job thus far. And I know you two working together, we're, we're very going a long ways. Thank you.
At this point, if I can, you know, maybe bring this to closure, I think we're gonna talk about it a little bit more on close. And Aaron and I truly, you know, appreciated the, you know, the dialogue, you know, between us and, you know, these, these are how bridges get built. Everybody's not going to agree, you know, sometimes, you know, we're not a watched council. But once again, you know, a proven thing, and, you know, perhaps in retrospect, we do have this thing, and, you know, I was the one that included, you know, discussion like, you know, council initiatives and stuff like that. You know, perhaps going forward, that's a type of thing, if you want to feel that so. You know, just go ahead and, you know, bring it forward. But, but let me just say one thing that is obvious. One thing a lot of people do know is that we are probably the most eclectic council in the history of Virginia Beach in terms of diversity, in terms of age, in terms of political background and everything. And let me just say that we, as a body, over the last couple of years, have been tested as a body, as an elected body during time of crisis. And when push comes to shove, we came together. Which tragedy, we, we together crafted strategies through, you know, to the COVID and everything. We got the money, the WISP money and all that other stuff to write people. We did that as a body, not one person. And I'm, and if you hurt me out on this stuff, no mayor does anything by him herself. But we got a great body among us. We have been through, we have been tested. We got a great city management. And, you know, sometimes in council at the, you know, I guess this is gonna be a dinner table pretty soon. Sometimes there are gonna be some, you know, you know, discrepancies. Aaron and I are gonna meet next week. We're gonna sit down. We're gonna come back from it. But the point is, at least we're having the discussions. And, but, you know, once again, this will be continued, and it was a complicated, emotional thing for a lot of people. But you know something? We're gonna get through, and we're gonna get through together. Okay, that being said, any other council discussions, initiatives or comments? Mr. Palucci and then Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three that I'd like to share with you today. I'll try to make all three of them brief. I want to raise to the council's attention, to the public's attention, a concern that many constituents in District Three have brought to me. And that is, that is about the operation of a venue on Waverly Drive, which is just off Rosemont Road, near Rosemont Road and South Plaza Trail. It appears that an establishment there is operating without the necessary assembly use permits. And Mr. Tahan will be able to share more detailed information about that. But the effect of this operation has been tremendous on the surrounding neighborhoods, including, and especially, it operates as an after-hours event space, so the events begin at two AM and they end around six AM where dozens of people pour out of this establishment into the neighborhood weekend after weekend after weekend. The establishment, from what I understand, has been cited for not having the appropriate use and continues to operate. And they continue to advertise events on their Facebook page. Now, the manager and the police department have been incredibly responsive to this situation, but it's been going on. It was first reported to me in May, and here we are in the middle of August, and the operation continues. The neighborhood finds it completely unacceptable, and so do I. I'm sure that everyone in this council and the public want businesses to thrive in Virginia Beach. We want, I want people to operate successful businesses, but you have to follow the rules. You have to have the right permits because there is a process in place to protect neighborhoods. And, and if I had a graphic here to show you exactly where this business is oriented into the neighborhood, you would be amazed to see just how close this business is to people's homes, and no one would like to live. And then every weekend in the middle of the night, you have dozens and dozens, or a hundred fifty people pouring out into the streets at six AM while you're maybe getting up for work, getting your paper, parking in front of your house. It's had a tremendously detrimental impact on the surrounding neighborhoods, and it needs to be addressed affirmatively. The operators need to stop, and the city needs to be more responsive to make sure that the concerns of this neighborhood are addressed. And so I'm asking for the city manager and for the police department to continue their enforcement, proper enforcement of the rules. But I'm also politely requesting the operators of this business to, to stop. It has, it's impacting the quality of life in Virginia Beach, and they don't have their proper permits. And it needs to end, and this matter needs to be resolved for this neighborhood as soon, expeditiously. So that's number one. The next thing I want to raise is a concern that many people have raised to me, and that's the issue of the emerging threat that's presented by the monkeypox virus. And as many of you know and has been widely reported, the monkeypox virus was declared a national health emergency by the US federal government. And, and yet, a lot of people don't, are not aware of whether they should get a vaccine, where vaccines are available, where testing is available, what's the impact on our local community. There's a lot of unanswered questions about the impact of the monkeypox virus in Virginia Beach. And I've raised this concern with the city manager, with Ms. Russell, who's, as you know, the, leads our communications effort, and also with Dr. Caitlin Pedati, who's the Department of Health Director for the City of Virginia Beach. And although responsive, I don't feel that the response, the public response is robust enough to provide clarity on this epidemic to the public and to those who could be at risk for the impacts of the monkeypox virus. And we know that there are many, a number of communities that are disproportionately impacted by the monkeypox virus as it stands now. And those people are at risk and, and they're, and they're, they're, they, I do credit the Department of Health with making strategic outreach to those communities, but it's not reaching everyone. In fact, someone just emailed me this morning to share that they searched for monkeypox on the City of Virginia Beach webpage, and nothing came up. And we've seen what this looks like before, where epidemics disproportionately impact various communities and constituencies, and we're slow to react. Virginia Beach should not be slow to react. Virginia Beach should react affirmatively to make sure we're sharing information widely and that it's accessible to all people, particularly those who may be at risk. And so I, again, will respectfully ask for the city manager, for the Department of Health, and for our communications team to, to, to spend a little bit more time on this. I understand Dr. Pedati is gonna be briefing the council sometime a month from now. Well, a lot can change in a month from now, including school's gonna start and college is gonna start. And what may be impacting one community disproportionately today could be easily and widely impacting other communities. And, and we need to, in my opinion, be more proactive and not lag behind as, as we have historically with other health epidemics and be on the front and correct side of this one. And that, that would be my ask, my request. Finally, on a more positive note, I, I want to share, and I suspect our colleague, Councilmember Miles, would also share her reflections on this. But we, we both attended the dedication of a new ambulance at the Ocean Park Volunteer Rescue Squad on, what was it, Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon? It was really wonderful. This is the first time I'd ever seen an ambulance put in service. And of course, the ambulances are made available to the volunteer rescue squads by no, no interest loans from the City of Virginia Beach and their staff by volunteers. And while an ambulance may be headquartered at Ocean Park, when an ambulance gets out into the street, as you know, it serves every, everyone in our community. I've had a chance to do ride-alongs, and you'll see Ocean Park in Punggol. You'll see Plaza in the oceanfront. There's no, there's no lines to where the volunteer rescue squad system serves. So it was really impressive. It was really wonderful to see, and they were all very excited. And, and I just wanted to call that out and to thank for, thank the Ocean Park Rescue Squad, their warm hospitality, but most importantly, which was, it was a fun party and.
Volunteer.
Good, good, that's right, volunteer. Good, good food, great celebration, but mostly for their dedicated service, their professional service as volunteers to our community to make sure that we remain, continue to remain the safest city possible. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara.
Well, here we are in the middle of August, and we're also in the middle of hurricane season. And we have been so fortunate for the past few years that we have escaped those, but, you know, I think every time we. But, you know, I think every time we, uh, weather, we look to see if there's anything out there in the tropics at this time. I, I'm a little bit concerned that it's been nine months since we had the flood and bond referendum. And I think that resolution that we passed indicated that the city council would be briefed at least every, every other month.
Oh, very unlikely, that is correct.
And I think we've only had one briefing and that was from the consultant who was talking about how they're going to look at all of these. We're, we're kind of overdue for an update. So I think as soon as we can get to, get a briefing on the, on the referendum projects to the council. But it also, I think, would be good to highlight for the public some of the things that have been put in place since Matthew. I think everybody gets really nervous, particularly when we see something like what happened in Kentucky and we say, when's it going to be our turn? But I know that we've done a lot since Matthew, not in these CIP projects, but in other projects. And I think an update on, you know, some of these things that have been put in place to, to address these things for neighborhoods that did suffer in Matthew would be good for people to know. And also that we can start these briefings to council on the bond referendum projects.
Barbara, since we just appointed, as you know, all late, I think what really would be great is the staff to get the commission to convene. So when they give us that briefing in September, that, what do they do because they're chewing? Staff could give us that brief and that would be a great way of bringing the commission up to speed as they bring us up to speed. That would be a good way to get that all activated, I think. See, the acting city manager taking notes, I know they're going to have.
Tell you anyone else? Rocky?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, another weekend goes by and I see another report from our police department that 15 illegally possessed firearms were taken off the oceanfront by Virginia Beach Police Department, OCOP officers. Five of those weapons were stolen. It seems like every weekend we hear more and more about these illegally possessed firearms. I'd like to hear from the chief where they're finding them. Are they finding them at the bushes? Are they finding them on suspects or in cars? So, W.C. manager, we could get with the chief and find out where these, where these weapons are being located. But, you know, these men and women in law enforcement keep pounding away and pounding away and getting these guns off the street. And when you see the guns they're taking, they're not just regular pistols and firearms, they're extended magazines, they're hologram sights, they're body piercing ammunition. So I want to thank the men and women of law enforcement because every weekend they're pounding away and, and they're getting these illegal weapons off the street. So I would like to hear a wrap-up of how many they've got and how many weapons been taken off the street, if I could. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John.
Come on. Noise ordinance, that was supposed to come back in 60 days from the date that we deferred it. I, I, I broached this topic with great temptation, but I am willing to, to engage in another public workshop. One where everyone who spoke or whoever spoke to any group got a personal letter in advance. That was, that was some kind of follow-up call on the phone, so no one can say, hey, we didn't know, we didn't know this, I want to eliminate the thing. But, and asking them on that, what I'm happy to say, if you compose it, even inviting them to come, but to bring their track changes, recommendations that they want to make. It is very hard for this body, I think, to try to discern from general comments where we are at. But clearly, I think the, we, I don't, if you kick this can down the road and another activity happens in 60 days, where were we started, Mr. Mayor? And I'm happy to take on that. My good colleague over there will join with me, Mr. Tower, take on another opportunity at another place, but with much more robust and commitments that what can people come? Needs to be at night, it's nine o'clock at night, I'll be there. Or if we need to have a morning session and a night session, I would do that too. I just want to be able to put aside any issue that somehow the manner in which we approached it, that people didn't have a chance to be heard. And I'll even take their email comments that they don't want to come out. But we've just got it on 60 days. I don't want to be looking around and seeing the same thing I saw before.
We have 30 pages of email comments on the public.
So what's, I'm, I'm willing to do that if the council is in the concurrence, Mr. Tower and I can try to make sure on 60 days from now that we, if we tell you we need an, an extension, it's only because we're drafting and incorporating all the responses, not because we aren't on practice.
Uh, Mr. Moss, those Catholics, Core Pennis.
As many as important because I know everyone gets these issues from their neighbors. Which brings me to STR, our favorite topic. This is what, if I could. This is on Bay Island. You may recall, this was a, where the person was doing the big modernization with the six bedrooms and the six bathrooms because we had the big family coming. Well, the six bedrooms and the six bathrooms is turned into a place where he doesn't live, but it was a short-term rental and it's on the Airbnb advertisement. What happens is in this enforcement gap, this will be looking to, city manager, is people show up and say, I live here. And so they're kind of, they're claiming a home share claim, but everybody in the neighborhood says that they're never actually there. So I don't know how that, that looks at, but we need to have something that, and I don't know the answer, but there's got to be a path that gets us to the point of being able to deal with those issues when people are falsely representing that they're residing at their place and the neighborhood's having to encourage short-term rental. I don't know the answer, I'm not asking for it today, but we have got to find prosecutorial avenues that allow us to get to the desired instinct, which is compliance. And so, and I hope that's out there. I want to just remind you all that I am meeting with the city manager and Mr. Jensen from Public Works tomorrow from 10 to 11 to talk about technologies that are very inexpensive that would allow us to digitize our lakes and ponds. So we know what the, what the science of their real status is. And more importantly, there's another sensor that allows us to determine the stratification. So you can see the amount of siltation from the original bottom that they had. And this is a problem not just in District Nine, it's in District Eight, it's in every district to some extent that had these kind of things because you're not going to get the performance of the flooding system, you've lost your capacity. And we saw what happened in Princeton Plaza when we let the siltation build up within three inches of the top. So I think we can be proactive and I think that gets back to delivering on the promise about our bond referendum and the big thing we said about maintenance of what we have. So we got to figure out, I think that's a normal expense. And I did mention, I know I'm, we're going to be scheduling legislative. We usually adopt that in October generally, or maybe September. So maybe that's going to push to the right a little bit, Mr. Mayor, but it would be nice to know. I, I have two items which I mentioned last week, I won't repeat those here. And then I, I look forward to, and I'm sure everyone is looking in your own districts and thinking that are minor costs that can make important changes in those districts as we look at our surplus from last year. I still, I'm going to be advocating, which I mentioned people often, that we work hard to return half of that. Because it may well be that some people are, in this inflationary environment, are looking somewhat less. Clearly, the bottom 40 percentile of the income distribution has been crushed by this inflation and price hikes. And so we cannot just ignore that. Maybe that's more funding for food bank. But clearly, this environment has disproportionately just crushed the purchasing power and living standards of that fully mixed pile of belows. And we need to be making sure that some of that surplus, we try to remedy some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Rosemary. And then Guy.
So John, for your principles. And on our agenda, there's some Dolphin Run. I was really surprised when we did the agenda review meeting of these, uh, Dolphin Run were on there because we worked with Mr. Tahan that these buildings like Dolphin Run and Edge Water that have been doing short-term rentals since 1970s would be excluded. And here they are. So it's a building that's been doing short-term rentals. I just thought it was very strange that they don't have to be on our agenda, but they are on our agenda today. Excuse me?
They all have to get CUPs.
No, no, not with, we, the way it was written is buildings that have been doing it forever. Which included Dolphin Run and Edge Water, I don't know if there's any others.
You may be right, Vice Mayor, but that is not my recollection of what we legally did. We knew that there were places that we were going to have to consciously include. In fact, I said that publicly.
At the agenda meeting, I said, I'm really surprised and they checked with Mr. Tahan.
Okay, yeah, give it to me.
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I'm not trying to make a big issue of it, I'm just letting you know that I was really surprised these were on there. And then, uh, on the, I think a very good note. I mentioned many times that on these stormwater projects, we should put a sign up where they're going up so the public knows. Saw a sign on 17th Street, I said, it had ripple effect, I said, this is very exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Guy, and then Barbara.
I would just comment on Mr. Moss's comment, uh, on one of them. I, I, I don't take issue with anything he said, I just want to make it that his comments went to a particular home share or alleged home share project that in fact was, may not be a home share. There are many, many folks out there who have home shares, I just want, and I know they are among the most compliant short-term rental proprietors, if you will, and operators. I just don't, didn't want to make it clear that we're not trying to change those regulations, not looking to just to go back on those. But there are people who, who violate, or may, maybe people who violate terms of the home share grant. We're not, we're not seeking, I, I'm only saying that not because I know these folks are very sensitive to, to the regulations, try very hard to comply with them, just want to make sure. This is a single operator we're talking about, not a group.
Correct. I'm only talking about the enforcement issue in this case, how different it is from the staff.
I knew you were, I just wanted to make clear.
Okay, good. Barbara, and then we're going to move, okay, then don't say.
My comment was also precipitated by Mr. Moss's mention of short-term rentals. Uh, in this, uh, stamp report we got on the noise complaints, I noticed this, this statement that said, uh, from the 311 reports that nuisance complaints for short-term rentals totaled seven for all of 2021, five unduplicated properties and zero to date for 2022. Complaints were for parking and noise which were resolved by the property owner and manager without police involvement. That's astounding. Is that right? It, it sounds like we must have gotten the ordinance right, only seven complaints in 2021 and none in 2022?
I read that specifically.
That's phenomenal. We, we did something wrong?
Okay, don't say.
Yes, I'll, I'll be brief. Just wanted to, one of, one of my passions is, is affordable housing. Uh, we say that we are a community for a lifetime, but we, and we want to bring our kids back and police officers and we still have 70 police officers to hire, uh, our teachers and, uh, the folks we want to hire at the oceanfront can afford to live here. We have an abundance of market rate housing, but there's a dearth of affordable housing. And really piggybacking on what Mr. Moss was saying about, some folks haven't recovered from it. And so I just want to make sure that we truly are, uh, living up to, um, our expectations to, to be a community that everyone can enjoy. And without having the majority of their income going just to housing. So I just, uh, if, if we have a little robust, I know we have a couple items on the agenda now, but I see all of these beautiful, um, projects going up. But if there's some way we can incentivize the development community to collaborate more with, uh, our city staff to incentivize it for, to have something set aside for, uh, those who can afford to live there. The laborers that are putting up these buildings, can they afford to live in the very places that they're having to build? That's, that's where my passion is and my heart is, to make sure that we do have a, a variety of, of housing options throughout the city. I'm not suggesting that we should concentrate affordable housing in one area, should be all over the city. But that we have, that the development community will, um, walk alongside the city staff in the, in the city in terms of making sure we create affordable housing throughout the city. And it, it's important that our police officers, our teachers, our young professionals just starting out, we say we want our kids to come back, can they afford to live here? Our veterans and our retirees and our seniors. I think that's just an important issue that perhaps that we would need a few more tools in the toolbox to incentivize that for our development community.
Okay, thank you.
We need to get you on the housing, housing advisory board. We need an extra person.
Okay, great. Okay, how about at this point, we do the, uh, the consent, consent agenda.
We have, uh, four items that need to be pulled. K1, J3, J4, and K1.
Hey, is there anybody else at this point?
Is everybody okay with, uh, the ordinances? Does anybody have a, would you like to say your ordinances?
Oh, I'm voting, um, I want, I have a comment I want to make either later or at the, after the vote on item five, because it deals with, we've got this so far along, I don't want to change it. But there's a policy aspect of this that I would like to point out, and I'll do that after the vote, I'm going to vote yes if I do want to comment on J5.
Okay, anybody else on consent? Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain. Okay, but did you do?
That, that was just the ordinances.
Okay, was there anything?
Number two, which the Real Property Inc. or conditional change zoning from, from I2.
Uh, uh, yeah, I'd like that pulled, I'm not blocking.
I have a question about that, particularly about school rejection that's seen a little time.
Number three, uh, Ruim and Joni P. Green, co-trustees of the Lee and Ruim Local Trust and co-trustees of the Joni and Ruim Local Trust. Could this need to permit for alternative development as 1900 landly wrote, District Two?
Oh, that can be on consent, but I did want, just to make a comment, I really haven't gotten any calls about it, but there was a, a serious question about how could this, uh, even be considered? Because it, it, one of our requirements would have to do with the amount of property that has to be out of, uh, particular soils. So that's why it's coming in as an alternative residential development, uh, which goes by soil type. And so it's because it has over 10 acres of type one soil. And it's allowed to, to go in this fashion, so I just wanted to clarify on that. Heard no other comments, and so this can be conditional on consent.
So four, five, and six, that's the, they're all Dolphin Run, short-term rentals. So you think?
I am, I have none of that.
I am okay with that. Okay, and number seven, Lori and Stuart, oh, I think this will use permit, short-term rental at 2002 Baltic Avenue.
No objection.
And number eight, Yurzy, for an aglio, this should use for a short-term rental at 314 39th Street.
No objection.
And number nine, uh, the minutes to mend the zoning, 401 of the city zoning ordinance pertaining to a to a small-scale agricultural processing as permitted use in the agricultural level districts. I understand.
Okay, but I'm kidding about you.
It was kind of. We talked about it.
Okay, at this point, the chair wants to entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exceptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.237 11A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body. Or six, pursuant to Section 2.237 11A3. District Six, District Six, District Six, all formerly Beach District. Legal matters, uh, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to the actual probable litigation. Where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or, uh, litigating posture of the public. the negotiating or, uh, litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A7. Number one, Holiday at All versus City of Virginia Beach. And number two, Lynn Haven Area Properties of City of Virginia Beach. And then legal matters, consultation with legal consulting of employee or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237-11A8. And that is the city voting system. And then finally, personal matters, discussions, considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, key motion, salaries, disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A1. Council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, appointees. Do I have a motion? Give it a second. Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Branch? Councilmember Holcomb? Councilmember Henley? Councilmember Miles?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye. Okay, uh, we're going to re, uh, recess to new executives and dinner is going to be on this.